Senator, members of the city council, please return to call meeting. The city council will be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 6:00 PM, Monday, August 12, 2013. For the purpose of our public work budget. In addition, we make the decision to go into a close meeting vote with the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randle?
Here.
Mayor Wright. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. We've got four items, and we'll follow the batting order that's before you, but I want to make a great announcement, one that I'm really happy to make. Come up here. I want to introduce publicly our new deputy city manager for operations, Nita Mencia Joseph. And she's no stranger to this building at all, after spending eight years with the school system as their director of operations. She is a can-do person. And just as great as that, she's got a great brain. I mean, what a great combination of things. And so, we're really excited about you coming, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. The first of September, and a welcome addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
Well, just you really made it hard for me to get those comments, but I am really looking forward to working with the city. I've worked with many of the people in the different departments, so I think it's going to be a smooth transition for me, but I want to thank John, and I'm looking forward to working under your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. She is literally the can-do, but also the go-to person for our staff to go to to get things done in the school system. The first presentation is on the Fort Smith Erosion and Sediment Control. This involves a new fee structure that we're recommending. And the reason why we have fees is to offset the cost of doing something. In this case, is to offset the cost of doing an inspection. And you do that so that the user pays. Not everybody needs to have a permit when they disturb the soul, because they don't disturb the soul. So, the concept is that the person that is doing the work has to get a permit and pays the inspection fee. What we're trying to do is be more sensitive to the concerns of our customers. We want to be very customer-friendly, and we're taking a proactive approach in that. So, what we're coming up with is a concept, instead of nickeling and diming the person who's getting the permit to death, a fee for each inspection, figure out how much the work's going to cost to begin with, I mean, how much is due, and levy a one-time permit. And that way, it will be more efficient, less bureaucracy, and a more efficient way to do our business. And this is not, this is one of those great ideas that comes from the departments, and James, this is James's idea. And it's so innovative that there's not another model around for us to look at. We can't say, okay, that city over there is doing this. So, this is really forward-leaning, cutting-edge stuff, and I'm really proud of the work that James has done. So, will you give the presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to give you a brief history of the city's erosion sediment control program and introduce our recommended fee structure. As you may remember, the city has a stormwater permit that's administered by the state, has a stormwater permit that's administered by the state and enforced by EPA. One of the main focuses of that program is to control and manage stormwater from construction sites, and the ENS program sets out that requirement. The goals of an effective erosion and sediment control program are to protect the natural resources as required by the Clean Water Act, protect the city's stormwater drainage system, and meet federal and state requirements for plan review, inspections, monitoring, and enforcement. Our erosion and sediment control program is based in regulations that are based on several water quality laws, those being the Clean Water Act and the Virginia Erosion and Sediment Control Law. The Department of Conservation and Recreation is responsible for administering this program at the state. They provide regulations and guidance for local program development, key amongst which happened in the period of late 1990s to early 2000s, when they provided guidance for corrective actions for enforcement and certification programs for both developers and the people who are going to be administering the program. Okay. Our initial program was adopted in 1975, and it was run by the Assistant City Engineer in the late 90s. Our inspections were performed by the city's engineering inspectors, however, it was not their primary focus. Their main focus, of course, were the city construction projects, so concrete work, pavement, drainage, any city buildings that were being built. The cost for land disturbance permit was $50 per acre, plus $35 for each additional acre or part thereof. There were no inspection fees. Every two to three years, the erosion and sediment control program is audited by the state. In 2004, we had an audit, and we were found to be inconsistent with the program that's outlined by the state, key amongst which were how we were inspecting projects, the frequency of our inspections, our documentation, and how we were carrying through our enforcement actions. After the review of our program, we were required to submit a corrective action agreement to the state, and in 2005 March, the state approved that plan. And shortly thereafter, we adopted the existing state ordinance and adopted the protocols that are in the state program as our own. We decided to have dedicated ENS inspectors to do our inspections, and in June of 2007, the state found that we were fully consistent with the state program. Ever since 2007, we have remained in compliance, and as recently as 2009, we received a rating of fully consistent. We started collecting fees for inspections in 2009. This is a little matrix showing how the inspection program is set up. I'm going to walk you through inspection of a typical project site. So, if you come in and get your land disturbing permit, we're going to set up that initial inspection, and we're going to come out and inspect that project. Everything's okay. 14 days later, we'll come back and do another routine inspection. If it's still okay, every 14 days, we'll come back and do an inspection. However, if upon any one of those inspections, if we come out and find a violation, we'll note that in the inspection, then 14 days later, we'll come back for that subsequent inspection. On that 14th day, when we come back for that inspection, if that same violation exists, you will get a notice to comply. When you get that notice to comply, seven days later, we'll be back to inspect to see if that issue's been taken care of. If that issue has not been taken care of, we will issue a stop work order. It has to be the exact same violation for an escalation of the offense to occur. So, say if your issue is silt fence, one time, and you take care of that, and we come back in 14 days, or seven days, whatever that inspection schedule is on, you've taken care of the silt fence, but you have an issue with your construction entrance. If you don't get a notice to comply for that, a construction entrance is your first violation. So, that's 14 days later, we come back to look at that one.
When these guys come in to get their land disturbance permit, or they're starting a new project, are all the rules and violations explained to them?
We have an inspection guide that's available at the front desk of the engineering department, and we provide that to them.
Should it be mandatory that we hand one to them with every?
We can. We can.
In that way, I mean?
That's a good idea.
We have a lot of construction that are getting ready to kick off, and we do want to be, you know, construction-friendly.
Yeah.
So, I think if they get a permit, by the way, here's the rules, you know, then it's, hey, I don't know the rules, or I'm getting fined $50, oh, they're picking on me. Believe me, I don't hurt at all. I'm like, look, go down there and talk to Ms. Valentine, she'll let you know where the rules are.
Get out of here.
Well, you know, when they get the permit, say, by the way, you need to take this, and maybe have them sign something, so when you start billing them, they can complain.
Okay. These are reasons for the recommended changes. First, it's a flat rate fee. Then, there's perception among those who develop that they're actually fined, and they're not fined. We have to inspect in accordance with the protocols that the state has set forward. We've just made a decision to charge a fee for those inspections. It's not a fine, it's a recoup cost, not the full cost, but some of the cost, basically a user fee. On staff's behalf, the main reasons that we're going through this is because it's more efficient, there's going to be less administrative time spent on these projects, they'll eliminate onsite conflicts, because often, our inspectors get into it with other developers back and forth. It's like, well, you have to do this because we have a permit that we have to comply with. Us making you comply with your permit gives us compliance with our permit. It's not because we want to come out and charge you a fee. For developers, it'll help them budget accordingly. Everybody likes to, when they go into a project, know what those costs are upfront. No surprise costs at the end of the project. Today, if you come in and you get your permit and go through your project, you don't pay after each inspection. If you get a stop work order, once you get that stop work order lifted, you pay then, but if your project still has to go on, you continue to get billed for inspections. So, when you come to get your certificate of occupancy, there's this monetary value out there for the inspections that you have to pay before you get that certificate. All that goes away with this new program, because everything's done upfront.
Yeah, but how would you enforce, or how would you charge a stop work order if you're going to do a lump sum charge?
Excuse me?
If you do a lump sum charge, like your suggestion, how would you do the stop work order? Will they still be fined $100?
There are actually civil penalties actually in the code that relate to enforcement, and so, we're looking actually at other parts of the code to actually get better enforcement. We don't want, we want to separate the inspection process from the bad actors.
The penalty.
From the penalty, exactly. We don't want you to think just because we're coming to inspect your site, that you've already done something wrong. We're there because we have to be.
Right.
We're not there because you've done something wrong. And so, we're trying to basically draw a clear line and separate the two, so there's no gray area or fuzzy area about why we're out there.
Right.
But at the same time, you're operating within what your guidelines are governing the inspection process.
Yes, ma'am.
And everybody will understand it's the same process.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, we get to the proposed fees. We've reviewed all the fees that we've charged since 2009, and established categories based on the type of the project. In general, we use the average project cost to establish the proposed fee structure. Flat fees are established for each project type. That fee will include the cost of the permit and all associated inspections. The fees will be collected at the issuance of the permit. We anticipate that the impact on revenue would be minimal, because we looked at what it takes to actually inspect a project. We've looked at large projects, small projects, single-family projects, subdivision commercials. What does it take based on the size of the project? How many inspections, routine inspection we have? How many violations do we think we might have? And that's how we came up with these fees. The revenue that you're going to see from any development process is based on the amount of development you have in the city. So, if development is up, fees are up. If development's down, fees are down. We've ran this proposed fee schedule by the Tower of the Builders Association. They support it, they signed off on it, and we've done random polls of different developers that have come in. We haven't talked to them specifically about fees, those developers, but specifically about paying upfront, not having to go through the, okay, I've got a stop work order, and I have to pay, I have to pay, they might get my CO. They all seem to be in favor of paying everything upfront.
It's got to be better budget wise for them.
Well, it is, and it takes away the bounty mentality. You're only doing this because you want revenue. We're doing it because we have a permit, and you're asking for a permit from us, and it's our obligation to make sure that you're square with both the federal and the state law. And if you're not, to answer Danny's question, like James said, if you're persistently doing it wrong, then we can go under a different section of the code and deal with that. But this makes it a whole lot more efficient, and it gets away from, well, you're only coming out here because you need the money. No, that's not why we're doing it.
Did you share the fees with the TBA?
Sure. TBA, yes.
You did.
TBAs in the room, behind you.
No, I'm just the realtor.
Oh.
I'm texting TBA right now.
Really close.
What about the CO? Hey, what were you saying about the CO? I have a question about the CO.
Sure.
This fee will also be, I mean, when would you give them the CO?
Well, once all the inspections are complete. So, the CO no longer depends on an inspection and a payment, it depends on you passing the inspection. So, you have to pass your ENS inspection.
So, you're paying upfront, all your fees, and then you still have the inspection process to go through.
Correct.
Then, after you get all that done, then they issue the CO.
Correct.
All right. Just because this is a fresh topic, meaning you talked about, how would we go about, like, the Newport piece, with being behind on taxes, it's per lot?
Well, that's totally different.
But you still had to get inspections, and they still have to come in and ask for a building permit.
I wish there was the activity out there, that there was inspections. It's just about as dead as a desert.
Right.
And what we're, we dug down into the numbers that we talked about at the last meeting, and I'm going to have a report coming, because it sounds like it's back taxes, but there are two components. One is back taxes, but one is delinquent fees, the fees that are charged to pay the debt service on the debt. So, we're digging down, and we're looking at other CDAs that are owned by the same, that involve the same developer. So, we'll have a report coming back to council on this.
Do you understand?
Yes, sir.
That mechanism needs, has to be there.
They actually are current with their erosion and sediment control fees, because they couldn't pull permits for the lots that they're on.
We're talking about personal property.
Okay, I'll stop. Sorry.
Real estate, I mean, that's a...
Now, when you came up with the fees, did I hear you correctly saying that you looked at the past value of the projects?
The past history of charging fees, you know, if you...
But not the cost of the project?
Oh, no.
Our cost, not developer cost.
Okay, our cost, okay.
A project this size costs us this much. A project that size costs us that much more.
And this size equates into dollars?
Well, it really equates to land.
The magnitude of the job.
The amount of land that's being...
The more land, the more dollars. What I'm getting at is, time goes on, how would you adjust the fees? Everything goes up.
Well, we'll come back and make a recommendation to council, and there will be some fine-tuning of this, to make sure that it's working correctly. Just like when we talked about it at the retreat, our zoning ordinance, not that that has a fee. It's time for us to fine-tune that, because what you enacted three years ago needs some fine-tuning. So, down the road, we'll most likely come back and say, you know, we need to tweak this just a little bit.
Have you bounced it off of any developers?
Well, yeah, James...
Other than just TBA, who's actually seeing the fees?
Right.
Just developers that have come in, that we see on a day-to-day basis?
Okay, so you've touched base with them.
What are your feelings towards paying fees upfront? Not the actual dollar amounts, but about the process? And they seem in favor of the process. They haven't looked at the actual fees that we're proposing.
Single residential family home, usually, we're getting an average of $632 in fees. Is that to build the house?
To inspect.
To inspect it, but I mean, right.
Here or there?
Here or there.
That'll vary based, a lot of that depends on the violation. If you've got somebody that's really good at doing what they do and doesn't have a lot of violations?
Right.
This may not work out in their favor, but the bad actor who goes on and on, every time you go out there, there's a violation?
Right.
So, it levels out somewhere in the middle, and that was our intent.
But it gives you uniformity, in terms of how you objectively look at what the cost of the job is, so you can compare that. It would be apples with apples.
Yes, ma'am.
As you work through the process of equating.
Yes, ma'am. When we actually think we'll get better compliance with this process, because it takes away that adversarial nature, you can get a lot more fluff with honey.
And you don't have to do all this paperwork every time somebody goes out.
No, you still have to do the paperwork. You still have to do the paperwork as far as the inspection.
She's talking about the financial paperwork.
The financial paperwork. Yeah, I still got to do the inspection.
Correct.
Then, you don't have to come back and do all the billing and...
And everything else, that's right.
And efficiency is what we're looking for.
Billing is half of what you do, I mean, yeah.
It's the back office stuff that gets you, it's the overhit.
So, as you can see here, we've categorized all the types of developments. So, we have single-family demolition, multifamily demolition, commercial demolition, single-family residents, multifamily residents, commercial properties less than an acre, commercial properties one acre to five acres, and commercial properties greater than five acres. As you can see, the smaller, less intensive developments, we've gone for the lower fees, and as we move up for some of the larger projects, those are the fees that are above those average fees, and we think we'll get a balance that way based on inspection time that it's going to take. Similarly, you see subdivisions, site work less than an acre, site work one to five acres, site work above five acres. If someone comes in with a subdivision and they decide to sell off the lots, typically, that person is not responsible for the permit for each individual lot. So, those individual lots...
So, divert back to your single-family?
Would go back to the single-family rates, and same way with multi-family.
What if they didn't sell the lots?
It would all fall under the main developers, so he wouldn't have to pay any more fees. It'd still be under that umbrella of the site development, because he controls the whole site.
I know developers would probably kill me for saying this, but I think you need to break the locks down.
We can look at that.
Because, I mean, you still need the revenue for inspecting each lot.
But aren't you going to get that when they pull the permit to build one?
Well, the thought being, you have all your controls up for the main site. You're going to separate that out with just individual controls for that small lot, but the main site still has its controls.
Every other city charges a fee per lot to build a house, but Portsmouth, you following me? What is it called? It's called the impact of the schools and the emergency, it's called a...
Fees.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's an impact.
You find that typically in the cities like Suffolk and Virginia Beach and Chesapeake that are growing.
Chesapeake's 7,000-some odd per lot.
I know, but...
They got a lot of lots.
You find it less so in an urban city like Norfolk or Portsmouth, because you're built out.
That's right.
But the impact fees are levied in those suburban-type cities and counties as a way of taking care of the quote-unquote off-site improvements.
They're only authorized in localities that have a certain growth rate, and Portsmouth doesn't have that growth rate.
We don't have that.
So, we wouldn't be able to do them anyway?
No, you wouldn't do them, but you could...
Impact fees.
You couldn't do those impact fees, but you could get inspection fees to generate some money. And look, I'm generating a bunch of lots here.
I'm turning your thing off here.
Let them get through the briefing. We'll come back.
We looked at the region.
Had a one-on-one call.
And it's difficult to compare our program with other programs in the region, because no programs in the region are similar enough to draw those comparisons. Fees are typically absorbed by other parts of the development process. Just take a look at who performs the inspections by city. You can see the different folks that are involved in the inspection. Whereas, we have dedicated ENS inspectors, that's their sole job, to do ENS and stormwater inspections. These inspections are done by folks who, that may not be their main priority. If we were to do that, it takes us back to while we received our, while we got in trouble in the first place with DCR. So, the comparison's difficult. There are, Norfolk was looking at, as part of this upcoming process, to actually try to implement a new fee schedule. I haven't done the research, so I don't know where they are. I can report back on that. Just comparison in general is different, just because of the way programs are set up. In summary, our ENS program is required by state law and is part of our stormwater permit. We're recommending these fees. We think there'll be minimal impact on revenue, because that portion is driven by development, not necessarily us going out and doing the inspections. It's going to make a more efficient process, a simpler process. Fees are going to be collected upfront, hopefully eliminate perception that we're penalizing you because we come out to inspect you, that it'd benefit both staff and developers with time and budgets, and there'd be no surprises at the closing of the project. So, for our next steps, we would like to move forward with the recommended new fee structure. We would like to have a public hearing, September 10th, city council meeting, and adopt the ordinance later at that same meeting. Any questions?
Can we get a problem with the fee structure?
Go.
Yes, ma'am.
My only question would be, if we're going to have a public hearing on the 10th, and I would imagine there might be some contractors or builders who might show up to speak, would it hurt anything if we moved the vote to the following meeting?
No.
I think we should allow that.
You see a problem with that, don't you? And that makes sense. You shut down the criticism of saying, gee, you really want this public hearing. A public hearing is not required.
You're going to vote two seconds later.
Now, the public hearings in there, because we do want civic engagement.
Yeah.
And, no, that's fine.
This is a kind of a, I love it, I think. I'm with it.
Your vote had started drinking.
We think we love it, too. I think it's a great idea, but I'd like to hear from the community that's affected by it, and then vote the next week.
Keep in mind, the other part of this process is that when we adopt a new state program next July, the way we do inspections is going to change dramatically. So, we have a lot of education to do for the general public, and we don't know what that's going to look like, so I anticipate, like Mr. Rowe said, there's going to be some tweaks here, once we get that program up and running, because there's going to be some adjustment that we're going to have to make.
There's an implicit theme here in tonight's briefings. It's about how clean our waters are that we discharge into. We have federal law, and the penalties can be quite severe, and the remedial action can be quite severe. So, the next reason...
Mr. Randle had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing, I think the key, as we put the information out there, should be correct, first of all, consistent, and connected in a way where the public, who's going to have to internalize it and put the projects before us, understand exactly what it is, so we do not run into, this community was able to do this, but this community came through, and they couldn't follow that process. So, we have to make sure that whatever we put out there is consistent, and it applies to every community that we are going to go in this rebuilding, our refurbishing process in it, so it will not come across as being different based on where you live in the city. That's going to be key.
Excuse me. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to point out, I don't know if you heard, if you caught what the manager's comment was, but a public hearing is not required for a fee change in this, for this ordinance, but the code does require a public hearing for new regulations or amendments to existing regulations. This is not, this is neither, this is just a setting of fee. But in the interest of disclosure and having, getting the comment, that's why they're having a public hearing.
But in order for it to be successful, people have to understand it, because they are the ones who are implementing it for the improvement of whatever business they are investing in.
And La Vore's is going to do that for us, between now and September 10.
And the public hearing, we'll close the loop on it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We've got it.
All right, next.
All right, the next one. If you're in the insurance business, you deal with risk, and if you don't know what the risk is, you're going to cover yourself with the premiums that you charge. If you can define the risk, and you say, well, there's not much risk here, then you're not going to reflect that high cost in the cost of your premium. The next presentation deals with flood insurance, and flood insurance is a policy that is a function, the cost of what the perception of the risk is. And Fred's going to give you a presentation on a program that we're very much involved with here.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Vice Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm with you tonight to talk about CRS recertification, and sometimes we use just the letters. It stands for the Community Rating System Program. It stands for the Community Rating Systems Program. The Community Rating Systems Program is a subset of the National Flood Insurance Program. And what we would like to do is talk to you tonight about a recertification program we have been doing every year for the last 10 years. But, as you said, we're the lineup, and really, the timing is everything right now. We feel like there are a number of issues that are gonna cause the program to be more in the public's eye, and we'll get into that in just a minute. The CRS, or the Community Rating Systems Program, has been available for communities to utilize since 1995. There are approximately 21,000 communities nationwide that participate in the flood insurance program. Only about 1,900 participate in the Community Rating Systems Program. So, it's a select group of communities that look at what you're doing and try to do that little bit more to reduce the risk, not only to the community, but to the individuals and to the businesses in the community. Virginia has 19 communities out of the 263 communities that are available for the program. In the south side Hampton Roads, Portsmouth and Norfolk are the only two. Virginia Beach, Chesapeake are looking at maybe going to the program, and that is getting a little bit of a push from bigot waters 2012, which I'll go into in just a second. Currently, the Portsmouth residents who have property in a special flood hazard area receive a 5% reduction on their premium, because we participate. It helps them. We would like to, as we move forward now, our new manual's out, new programs are out. We feel like the time is right. We want to increase that reduction, so our residents that are at risk can have a savings on their premiums. Real first comes to mind, dollars and cents. As you can see, we have roughly 3,800 policies in the city, and each policy is saving about $26. And again, that's 25% reduction. And that is using numbers based on 2012, not the figures that are starting to come out now as the subsidies are being removed from the federal government on the premiums. We're hearing individuals who have had premiums of maybe $500, actually going up to $3,200, because the subsidy's been removed. So, 5% of 500, it doesn't sound like a lot. 5% of 3,500 does make a difference. As you can see, as we go down in ratings, actually, we become better. And this is a program created by ISO, Insurance Services Organization. For those of us that are a little bit older, you will remember this through the fire department. They actually went through and said, how many fire hydrants do you have? Do you have a volunteer or a paid department? Do you have training? They've taken that program and moved it over to the flood insurance program to say, again, if you're doing more, if you're doing better, if you're better prepared, the risk is reduced.
Paige.
Therefore, you're helping, you know, you're helping your community.
Is this an automatic, do the customers need to do something?
Not a thing.
So, because they live in Portsmouth, is it communicated to the insurance companies that they-
It's, when they go to get their policy, it automatically prints out on their policy. You have received a 5% reduction, because the city of Portsmouth participates in the CRS program. If we move ahead and get more points, and all of a sudden we're 10% or 15% reduction, then that's automatically provided.
Okay.
The only individuals that do not get the reduction are what they call the preferred rate. You're already at the lowest rate you can get. You're not in a hazard district. It's considered to be minimal risk. It's a policy some people just want to have. But for those people that are in the hazard locations, we feel it's a good program for them.
How is that determined?
The city is divided into a number of different flood districts. Some are considered hazards, some are considered non-hazard. Those maps are prepared by the Army Corps of Engineers, certified from FEMA, and provided to the city of Portsmouth to be adopted. If you remember, we adopted the last set of maps in September of 2009. So, those are the maps that are being used by the real estate, the lending institution in the insurance industry to determine someone's at-risk status. We've actually taken those maps and put them online, very clear colors, and using the aerial photographs with a bleed-in, or that you can actually see your house, your property lines, and the flood lines. So, it's, we've taken it two or three steps further, and we got points for that, too. Now, in addition to the dollars and cents, reduction of flood damages. At the end of a flood, if you have come out better than your neighbors or anybody, because you took steps to protect yourselves, that's a plus in anybody's book. Increased recovery after a flooding event. If your business is up and running sooner, you're gonna get the business. You're gonna be the one that people will turn to. And the reduced family disruption before, during, and after. I don't think, you know, we think about it, but you never really look at it. That week before the hurricane gets here, everybody's running around, everybody's worried, what do I do? In the middle of it, you're going, will I still be here? Will my house? This gives you a way to reduce that, and not mitigate it completely, but it helps you reduce those concerns. This year, and if you remember, in 2009, we also adopted a floodplain management plan. We said we wanted to do these things to help reduce citywide. Signage warning of potential street flooding. Actually, we're going out tomorrow morning and start mapping about 20 locations in the city that the streets flood, and we'll be putting up signs that says, the street may flood, and then the 1, 2, 3, 4 feet to tell you how deep. Notices to real estate, insurance lenders, civic leagues, and churches. Those went out at the end of May to coincide with the free, tax-free hurricane preparedness weekend that was in Virginia. We've been speaking at a number of different fraternal civic organizations throughout the year. One of the things that we started that has gained a lot of attention is we're actually taking pamphlets that were developed by staff, a segment of our population that is often overlooked as the tenant or rental up. And so, we're using the inspectors to leave one of these pamphlets when they do the rental inspection. Real simple, real easy, doesn't cost a thing, except to pay for the pamphlet. But it's addressing a part of the population that usually is left out in any of the preparation.
That's it. It informs them-
Yes, ma'am.
-from being in the dark.
It does. All of the pump stations have been outfitted with generators or switching gears, so we can connect to them quickly with generators. The tide gate, flood gates installation on all of that falls at Crawford Bay has been completed. We're continuing the investigation of tide gates in the area south of City Hall, and we're beginning an investigation in an early warning system to warn citizens that are in flood-prone areas. So, maybe phone calls or some type of warning that would go to them. What do we need to do? Well, like I said, we've done it every year. It's fairly simple. We do everything that I've just told you about during the year. We then begin in August to prepare the package. It goes out roughly September 15th from the city manager's signature to ISO, and then spring of 2014, they write back and say, yes, we got it, everything's fine, you're okay. This year, though, we feel like we wanna start, I guess, as you would say in NASCAR, these are the final laps, and we wanna sort of put the pedal to the metal. We want to move ahead and become a community that utilizes all of the partners and all of the programs and activities that are coming out. We're looking right now, we have been informed that we will be getting new maps, new flood insurance maps like we got in 2009. We will probably be getting new ones to us in 2014, as early as January, but we're thinking spring. With that, will come new regulations, because the maps will be more detailed. We've actually requested and received confirmation that Congress has agreed for the Corps of Engineers to have a budget to assist us with preparation of a updated floodplain management plan in the next year. And we're gonna have to continue monitoring bigot waters. As I said, it's a program, it was an act of Congress that said, the subsidies are coming off of the insurance policy. If my house was built prior to the program starting, your policy is subsidized. Right now, you know, you may be paying $1,000, regardless of whether your house is four foot above the flood level or four foot below it. Once the subsidies are removed, you're gonna be required to show an elevation certificate. And that's gonna say, how high is my floor in my house? Again, looking at at-risk. If I'm higher, and I'm not gonna get flooded, I'm less at risk. So, you're gonna see premiums changing for the four foot above to be about $500, to the four foot below to be somewhere around $10,000 a year for your premiums. That's gonna have an effect, I think, across the board, not only insurance, but also in the real estate, the sales, everything. So, everything we can do to help reduce premiums through the CRS program, we feel like it is important to do that. And then through the program, we can also have a public awareness that says, if you take these vents out, put these flood vents in, we count your floor instead of your crawl space. It's a simple, little program, but it may help save, again, our citizens' money. We're gonna incorporate new LIGHTAR. It stands for Laser Inducted Digital Aerial Reconnaissance Map. They've already been flown. They're being finalized right now. Right now, the maps that we have are very good, but they could have as much as a three-foot difference in what the true elevation is. The LIGHTAR on land, not talking about buildings, but on land, would be approximately three inches difference. So, you could really make some detailed mapping and some studies on that. And if you remember, we, the Corps came out with a group of surge models that said category 1, 2, 3, 4. Those new maps are coming out again this year. So, they've taken and updated. So, we have a number of programs coming together at one time that we're excited about, because we feel like we can take all of that energy, have a number of public meetings, have a number of citizen engagement forms, and create a program that helps make Portsmouth one better than the best. Some questions?
We'll keep you posted. The next presentation, I'm gonna take you back a little ways. September 2007, we signed a consent order with the Environmental Protection Agency for the cleanup of Elizabeth River and the Chesapeake Bay, because it flows in there. And we agreed to do certain things. But not only did we sign the consent order, but all of our neighbors did, too. And when you take a look at the total price of doing the things necessary to get in compliance with the consent order, it is a big price tag. And so, as a region, we looked at, how can we possibly reduce that? And you authorize us to participate in a regional study, and we wanna give you an update on that regional study. And Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm here to give you an update on the regional study that we're doing to look at the possible consolidation of our sanitary sewer systems in the region. Like Mr. Rowe said, we are under this consent order, just like all of our neighbors are. And so, we've taken this as an opportunity to take a step back and say, is this a good time to consider this, and what might the benefits be? But just to give you a little background, just as a refresher, the Hampton Road Sanitation District, HRSD, they have nine wastewater plants throughout the region that treats all of the sewer in Hampton Roads. Portsmouth and all of our neighbors, we operate our own collection system, and then we, it goes to HRSD pump station, and it goes to their treatment facilities. So, our customers pay both a sewer bill to the city of Portsmouth for the collection piece, but they also pay a bill to HRSD for the treatment. And those of you who've been on council and active in the city will probably remember that Portsmouth, we used to have our own wastewater treatment plant. It was out of Penner's Point. And back in the 1980s, we transferred ownership of that to HRSD. We got out of the treatment business and just stepped with collection. And so, now, there's no, that plant doesn't exist anymore and was demolished, but we did at one time have that. So, we're under the consent order as to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows, which they can occur during wet weather for inflow and infiltration. Inflow meaning pipes, like say rainwater pipes or downspouts, or things that might be directly tied in our system, shouldn't, aren't supposed to be. Infiltration is where, you know, pipes are cracked or things where water can seep into the system. And those are the two things that we're trying to get rid of. Prelimarily, we're looking at perhaps upwards of $300 million to address our issues over the next 30 years. It's a $2.2 billion estimate for the region, and that's both for the localities and also for HRSD. So, we're looking at what can be done. Just as a refresher, what we've done since that 2007 timeframe, we've done extensive system evaluation, we've done smoke testing, closed circuit television evaluation, manhole inspections, flow monitoring. All of that information we've got, we have to develop a rehabilitation plan that will specifically outline the types of improvements. And things that we, and we've already made fixes, things that we, what we call find-and-fix, things we could, that are easy to take care of, say, a specific manhole or section of pipe, we've tried to take care of that already, just to stay on top of the issue.
About $10 million a year for the next 30 years is what we're gonna be budgeting in our budget?
That's about right. And once we find, once it gets finalized, we'll have a better indication, but that's the order of magnitude that we're talking about, just to comply with this consent order. So, like Mr. Rowe said, council, you adopted the resolution back in April of last year to participate in a regional study. HRSD's paying for this study. It's being administered by the Planning District Commission. And all of our neighbors' localities in the region also adopted similar resolutions to undertake this study. You're not bound by it in terms of, you agreed to do the study, but whatever the recommendations are that come forth, we're not bound by it, but certainly strong consideration. We did an RFP through the PDC. I was on that review panel, along with some of my colleagues from the PDC, HRSD, The Beach, Newport News, and James City. The consultant that was hired was HDR engineers, and they partnered with McGuire Woods and Davenport. And all three of those firms are not strangers to Portsmouth. We have an annual services agreement with HDR we have for several years. Some of their most recent work for the city, they did a pump station for, out of our water treatment plant, and they have done several sewer pump station upgrades and the design work over the last three years. You know, Davenport's our financial advisor, has been for several years. McGuire Woods is our bond counsel. So, that team's very familiar with Portsmouth and our system, and we were very comfortable in having them do the study in the region. Now, the deadline, the consent order has deadlines for submission of our rehabilitation plan and wet weather management plans. When we agreed to do this regional study, we approached EPA, DDQ, Department of Justice, because this is a court order that we're operating under, and we told them we were considering regionalization, and we wanted some time to be able to look at that, because we thought it would be a better way to comply with the consent order. And they agreed. And by doing that, they've actually delayed some of the deadlines. We actually had a November 2012 deadline to submit our rehab plan, a November 2013 deadline for wet weather plan. Those have been delayed. These are the deadlines that we're currently working on with this regional study.
Are those just Portsmouth deadlines, or those are-
Same deadlines for everybody.
Region-wide.
Region-wide. Yeah, region-wide. So, the deadline right here, and I'll come back to these, but just to put them up here, just February 28th, we're talking about a preliminary commitment, not signing on the dotted line, but just an indication of whether we're gonna move forward. August of 2015 is really the deadline for that final commitment. And if, and if things are going well, but we haven't got all the pieces tied together, we can likely get an extension. So, and I'll come back to those at the end, but those are the deadlines we currently have. So, this is-
Asset transfer.
...service area for HRSD. Yes, sir.
Asset transfers, what?
Basically, when we, if we regionalize- Basically, when we, if we regionalize, we're going to get out of the sewer business. That's the bottom line. So our collection system will be transferred to HRSD, just like everybody else's. That, that's really the bottom line. If we regionalize and consolidate, and if that's the will and what's the best decision that everybody makes, we will, HRSD will do both collection and-
And the other.
That's, that's, that's what that means.
And if that happens, then the homeowner gets one sewer bill?
Correct.
One from HRSD. Again, they get two now.
Whether they're in Portsmouth or James City, can't-
That's correct.
Right.
They're still getting one.
And that's the footprint, the next slide, of HRSD, which you're going to go into the history of-
Right. Yeah, HR, this is the, of course, the darker area, HRSD, the star here, that's Portsmouth.
Identify the areas for-
This is, of course, these are, these are the areas that are in the HRSD service area. So south side, you have The Beach, Norfolk, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Isle of Wight. And on the peninsula, you have Newport News, Hampton, the Cosen, York County, Williamsburg, James City, and that's Gloucester. Now, the PDC also has Surrey County, Southampton, and City of Franklin in the Planning District, but they are not a part of HRSD. They, they do their own for sewer. But those are the jurisdictions. What's not shown on this map, HRSD also has some jurisdictions up on the middle peninsula, King William, King and Queen, Matthews. But the consent order, these are the jurisdictions that are under the consent order, and this is, and this is their primary service area.
What would be the benefit to our citizens?
All right. The benefit, remember what the region-wide cost is.
Right.
Two point, what?
$2.2 billion.
$2.2 billion. Our slice of that pie is 3 million, 300 million. If we could cut that by 10% or 50% or whatever, that would be the benefit. It would be the economies of scales that you get. And that, that's what, it's a kind of quirky consent order because there are thresholds that apply for each jurisdiction that may be really big in one jurisdiction or minuscule in another. Under this concept, you would do worst first. You would attack the worst problem first. And it may not be in your jurisdiction. So it's the economy of scale, it's reducing the liability. That's the benefit. There's a lot of heavy lifting that needs to get done in order to get there. But we want to give you an early on update on where we are because we've gotten feedback. And Brian's going to cover the order of magnitude that we might be able to save by going with a regional. There are drawbacks.
Who, who will control the fees and rates then, only one?
Well, just HRSD's board. That's a board that is appointed by the governor. It's an eight-member board. The state code, the enabling legislation that created the district specifies where the commissioners come from. We have a commissioner, but that seat is vacant because that person has moved. And we have recommended to HRSD, and they've recommended to the governor's office, but the governor has not yet appointed that person. So it's a governing board, and they set the rates now. Now, what, the sewer bill that we have covers the collection only. Once it gets to an HRSD transmission main, their bill covers the cost of that transmission main, the maintenance on it, and then the treatment. And there's one, if you want to give up anything in local government, you want to give up sewer treatment. I mean, it's just fraught with problems.
Is there a wash now that we're breaking even with what we're charging and what it's costing us or?
Well, think about our utility system. Our utility system is operated as an enterprise fund. By that, it's operated like a business where the revenues cover the expenses. No tax dollars go in. The subsidiaries have fund. And both components of the fund are self-sustaining.
Mr. Moody had a question.
How will the savings be allocated? You have 15 members there.
Right.
And the, the cost, I take it would vary according to the size?
Correct.
So how, what formula will be used to-
Well, the way, I mean-
-give you up the savings?
In essence, the, the way it was examined, it's basically, and let me go ahead to the next slide. And these are, these are what was the key pieces of components. And again, I'll go to answer your question, you look at the last one, it's regionalized versus non-regionalized. Basically, if we, and that's how they looked at the study. If we regionalize, there's a benefit. If we not, if we don't regionalize, or, or, excuse me, let me back. If we regionalize, there's a cost for that. If we don't regionalize, there's a cost for that. And in doing this study, as far as the rehab plan and so forth that we have to do, if, if we don't regionalize, we're still going to have to do that. The consent order is going to make us do that. Our ratepayers and utility, we look at as ratepayers, not taxpayers, although they are the same people because they're paying us a bill, but our ratepayers are going to bear 100% of that cost. Okay? If we regionalize, then that cost gets spread out amongst the entire region. And so there's still that cost, but the cost is less. And so it's not that the savings is apportioned, basically it's cost avoidance that we would pay otherwise if we kept a go-alone approach. So it is, it is likely that some folks will, if, if you want to look at it, may see a bigger benefit. That's a possibility. But the, the benefit is their cost won't be as high as they would be if they stayed on an individualized basis. And that's the same for Portsmouth. It's clearly, the numbers at this point show that we would be better off financially, our ratepayers would be better off financially if we regionalize than if we don't, because we would bear 100% of that. Because the consent order is going to make us do the improvements one way or the other. The regional approach allows us to get rid of the jurisdictional lines, look at it all from a regional basis, and do where we can get the biggest return. And whether that's a distribution system issue, whether that's a treatment capacity, there's, there's different, different ways that that can be done.
Well, this unfunded mandate, let's go back to that, that consent order, the unfunded mandate. Any move afoot to either delay that or to eliminate that?
What we're dealing with is that we're catty-cornered to the federal law.
I realize that.
And instead of getting a penalty and the, the feds dropping the hammer on us, we agreed to a consent order. And with that, we said, okay, we will solve the problem over this period of time. And Bill, I, I just don't see that law being undone. It's a nationwide law, and it's going to take an act of Congress for it to get-
When you say we agreed, the state agreed or the region?
The region. I mean, we, we were under the hammer with, with EPA. And it was better to enter into the consent order than to let the hammer fall from EPA. Would have been more costly for us. You end up paying civil penalties with that. So when the city signed the consent order in all the other jurisdictions in 2007, that was a better way forward. It was a, it was a cheaper way forward. It's still bad medicine to take. I mean, it's costly medicine. But what the basis of this is, is the, the federal law that says you've got to clean up the waters.
Even with the savings, and the savings is actually a, a reduction in the cost?
Yeah.
As no windfall?
No.
That's going to still result in a substantial increase, is that?
Correct. I mean-
Do we know what that's going to be on the consumer at this point?
No.
We don't.
We don't know. And please don't misunderstand this presentation. We're not putting any spin on this. I'm not saying this is a good idea or not. For, we are a fully developed city, so our, our sewer system is in place. But think about if you were Suffolk and you've got a city that has growth. What you're doing is losing, you're giving up a little bit of your control of your destiny as it relates to laying sewer downs. There's a lot of things that have to be worked through here. So don't, don't read anything between the lines at all. We're not recommending up or down. What we are recommending is that we continue to be in the, the study.
The way I see it, the consumer is going to take it on the chin one way or the other.
That's right. But, and it's because of all the pollution that has gone into the rivers. And that's what's happening, is that we have raw sewage discharges that go in the river. Nobody wants that. And so there's a cost for cleaning that up. And it can happen, as, as Brian said, it happens one of two ways. Your sewer treatment plant is sized for a particular amount of gallons. Let's say it's sized for 10 gallons. You get a rain event like what we had, you get, if, if the storm sewer is somehow cross-connected to the sanitary sewer, that goes into the sewer plant, it gets overwhelmed, and you have raw water discharge. In September of 1979, it was, at that time, it was the sixth-wittest September on record, the sewer plant in Hampton dumped in, in less than 24 hours, 2.4 million gallons of raw sewage into the back river, closed the river. It closed it to shellfish operators. Davis Clam Company had five million clams on the river bottom that he could not harvest. So it's because of the concern about not polluting the rivers that we have this law. And so our cost is to correct those cross-connections, correct those pipes that have separated because of age and infiltration gets into it. That's what makes up that $300 million number.
So again, these were the, these were the main things that were, that were considered in the study, these various issues. And, you know, different folks have different concerns about them. On the, on the, the governance is a big one. And currently, like, the HRSD structure is, you know, eight members appointed by the governor. And one of the recommendations is that, that governance model has to change. And it's recognized that the localities that need to have a say in how that board is constructed and so forth. So that's one of the things that's going to come out in the study as far as a recommendation. That requires, you know, some state law change in the Enabling Act for HRSD. So we, the consultants looked at all of the, you know, the legal review, they looked at our debt. I mean, it passed, passed the initial tests, is can we even legally do this? Can we, can we refinance and do those things? Passed all those tests in terms of the analysis and looking at all these other issues. And so the report, we've got a preliminary report last month, asked for our comments, we reviewed, we met with the consultants. Final report incorporating those comments and changes is due the end of the week. And what, basically what the findings are, is that they're recommending, HDR, the consultant, is recommending regionalization of the sewer systems as part of HRSD. They estimate that by doing so, that's worth in today's dollars, net present value, $900 million savings over 30 years. It's a significant financial incentive to do that. Portsmouth's share, based on their numbers, is probably about 41 million. If you did a straight average, if everybody was the same, that's 64. So we're a little bit less. So again, it's not an even distribution, but it is a significant savings and one-
Assuming everybody participates.
Assuming that everybody participates. That's correct. And so keep-
Because, well, I'm pretty sure there's one locality that might, that may not participate. It looks like on, on the slide, but-
There might be more than one.
There might be more than one. And, and-
So when you come back to us with the, with the final analysis briefing or recommendation, you're going to have those scenarios for us?
We will.
Maybe up as a result.
We will. And this, and this one right here, that, that's preliminary. I don't, the, and that was in the preliminary. They went back and talked with them, and they may have adjusted some of their numbers. That, this bullet point may change. But we haven't gotten the final report. But in, but in, but even so, doesn't, just because it might be, it might be neutral, revenue neutral for them, but there's other reasons. I mean, financial is a key piece, but keep in mind, just the regulatory burden moving forward and that, that it's just, it's getting harder and harder with Clean Water Act and all the things you have to do. Being in the sewer business is not really, in, in some respects, is probably not really a preference of, of, of a business that you really want to be in, but it's just something that, that we've, we have to do. But that's the preliminary findings. And again, we, there's a lot of analysis that we need to do as far as how it impacts Portsmouth, all of these issues that still need to be resolved, whether it's governance structure, those kinds of things. There, we, we've got a lot of work left to do.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, the, the governance board that you mentioned briefly, here's another non-elected body going to be pretty much setting the fees, not unlike what soup that we currently have, reference a non-elected body establishing tolls, entering into agreements, not unlike a few years ago, the Hampton Roads Transportation Authority that the State Supreme Court finally ruled unconstitutional. So that's a concern. We get these non-elected, you know, quote, governance boards that are establishing fees. And there's no recourse for citizens. There, there's no-
Or municipalities.
There's no incentive to get more efficient. If anything, it's probably taking the reins off because, so the board can get even more bureaucratic.
That's a very good point.
That's true, Bill.
The Hampton Roads Transportation Authority not only set fees, but they set taxes. And that was dead on unconstitutional. One way around this might be to put a board like this under the purview of the State Corporation Commission, so that it, there is a review, just like for Columbia Gas or for Dominion Resources. You just can't automatically one day have a meeting and raise the fees. So there's, again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Right now, I mean, Hampton Roads Sanitation District sets the fees. How often do you think about that? Well, you might think about it once, six times a year when you write your check. And, but beyond that, I doubt that much, many people. That's a very good point that you got. And so these are some of the details that we've got to, got to work our way through. There's more to work through. There's more baggage with this than, I mean, that, that previous slide is compelling to save money, but there's an awful lot that has to be done in order to get to that, that number. And so don't be surprised if there's a Plan B or a Plan C or a Plan D. But our goal is to find the, the method that's most cost-effective for our citizens, or I should say, our ratepayers, because we are talking about this expense being part of the enterprise fund.
Mr. Moody?
You know, two things bother me is, one, we are pretty much growed out. Chesapeake, Virginia Beach has some growth left, Suffolk has a lot of growth left. And then who controls this board to go get Franklin and go get, you know, the other counties around us when, then they are able to control all the fees? You know, that, that's one thing that bothers me. You know, Franklin, you said wasn't a part of it.
Franklin's not.
Right. And, you know, what we're going to end up doing is paying in. They're going, they're not just going to say, all right, we're going to lock the ring, nobody else can come in, Hampton Roads, HRSD. And what we're going to end up doing is letting them control all the fees, all the sewage pipes, charge the fees, and we're going to have to sit back and just take it on the chin. I just, it's going to-
It's going to be a double-digit price. It's going to be our own.
Yeah. Out of concern.
Well, like, those are, those are the issues that we have to, I mean, like, the, the governance piece, there, I mean, there, the, the recommendation is to, you know, is for locality appointments. So you wouldn't be elected, but you would have a say in who's appointed to represent Portsmouth on that board. And just like, I mean, but that, that's what's coming forth. Again, that requires, you know, state coaching. And that's just one small piece. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of issues. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of issues to work out. But there are some economies of scale, not only on the capital side, but on the operational side, with a consolidated entity. I mean, the system, if you think about it, the system itself, the pipes in the ground, they're already interconnected.
Right.
Because, I mean, they go from us to HRSD. So the whole region, from a sewer perspective, is already interconnected. And you're already halfway because, towards regionalization, because the treatment part is already regionalized. A lot of other, you look at a locality, like a Richmond, or a Lynchburg, or, that city does the water and the sewer, it does the water treatment and the wastewater treatment. So they have, they have those facilities that they're doing themselves. Whereas here in our region, you know, we're not doing the wastewater treatment piece. So you're already halfway there. So it's logical to look at that. Doesn't mean it's the best way to go. That's what we've got to determine. But this consent order and the magnitude of work that's got to be undertaken is what really makes us need to take a hard look at, is this the best way, how we're currently doing it? Does that make the most sense moving forward to, to continue to be on our own? Or does it make sense to consolidate? And all of your questions are excellent questions. Those are the things that we'll be working on in the coming weeks and months, once we get the final study and look at it. And we'll be coming back to you as we go through this, so you are well-informed in plenty of times when a decision needs to be made, that you can make the best decision for Portsmouth. That's our goal.
And this is an important decision. It's not one that you make today and not do tomorrow. That's why it's really important that we work hard to understand all the consequences of this. And again, remember, there may be only three people in this room that's had the great honor and privilege of operating a sewer plant, of being responsible for one. And it's the type of business that you do not want to be in, for all the reasons that we've talked about tonight.
So this is just the, I mean, the last slide. Again, some of these natural issues of discussion, that's what we've already talked about, those are the things we'll be working on. And we want, like I said, we want you to be prepared and fully informed when it comes time to need to make a decision. And we'll continue to be talking with our peers in the region, our neighbors, and try to work together for a solution that's best for everyone.
And you've had really good questions tonight. I mean, even if we were not talking about sewer, just think about the large area, the footprint of this, and how difficult it would be to get consensus almost on any subject, any easy subject. This is a tough subject. And you're dealing with urban cities, suburban cities, rural counties, suburban counties. So you have a good mix of where people are.
This is probably required, Tom, with just, you know, just itself, some work sessions just to discuss this.
Yes, sir.
And when do you plan on coming back to us?
I would say the earliest at this point would probably be later this fall. We need, we need some time to go through...
At the regional level.
Yeah, at the regional level, and go through the report, and do some, some of our analysis and number crunching, make sure, you know, how things work out. So it, it won't be any time, I mean, it won't be any time soon. It's August now, you know, we're probably talking maybe October, November timeframe would be the earliest we'd come back. But again, we'll probably be back in front of you more than once.
Yeah, I want you to come the second, second, Monday in, in February.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Fourth Monday of February.
The train may have left the station by then. We're not waiting that long. At the last council meeting, you had a citizen appear before you and ask about...
Marley, there's a question. That's all right. No, I was just saying that we need to make sure all of the facts are pulled together, and we can all be on the same sheet, because there are many ramifications if all of the other areas do not come in together.
Oh, yeah.
You may be back at square root one.
At the last council meeting, you had a citizen talk about the All-American City, and you asked me to look into the process, and we're reporting back tonight. And we'll tell you about the process, but we'll tell you about our calendar to apply for the next round of the awards. And Roslin is going to give this presentation. Again, it's a collaboration. She and Fred worked on this. They started working the very night, the very night that this came up. Okay?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the city manager indicated to you, you had a non-agenda speaker come before you, where he presented the plaque that he had for the 1976 award that we received back then. And you asked the city manager to look in how we're going to go about, how we will go about receiving this award again. The All-American City Award was created in 1949 by the, by the National Civic League. This is, yeah, the National Civic League is a 117-year-old nonprofit organization. And they created this program when a reporter came to them and asked them at the time, when it was called the National Municipal League, about naming the top 10 best governed cities. And instead of doing that, they decided to just come up with the top 10 cities that utilize civic engagement and how they achieve that engagement. Since the enactment of this program, about more than 600 programs have been awarded this distinction. And they awarded this distinction based on the innovation in areas such as job creation, neighborhood revitalization, crime reduction, new housing for low-income people. And to participate in this, they recognize about 10 communities each year. And these communities are made up of towns, neighborhoods, city, and metropolitan areas. And in order to win, the community must demonstrate their innovation, their inclusiveness, their civic engagement, and just cross-sector collaborations across all the projects they present as far as the application process. So in the Hampton Road area, we have had three cities that have received this award, Portsmouth being one of them. Norfolk just received their most recent award in 2013, and Hampton is the other one. A total of 16 Virginia localities have received this award altogether, the Roanoke region being the one that received it the most. The city of Roanoke received it five times, followed by Roanoke County, and then Roanoke Valley has also received it. So they're the ones who have received it the most out of the localities in Virginia. These are the four criterias that the All-American City Award focuses on, civic engagement and collaboration. They want to see not only are you involving your citizens, but how are you also involved in terms of your departments, your elected officials, your surrounding business areas, civic leagues, those types of things. And then they look at the inclusiveness and the diversity. They want to make sure that you're cross with your ages, your race, your gender, sexual orientation. They want to see how much you're involving those people inside of the programs that you're presenting to them, as well as the innovation that you're doing. How creative were you involving all of these people? And then they would like to see that you could actually track and show the progress that you have made in addressing these areas of concern. This year for 2014, they want to spotlight the healthy communities. This is to mark the 25th celebration of the program, national program as a whole, when the movement first started. And they want to look at how are you promoting things like walkable communities, what have you done to address bicycling, things of those nature. They want you to highlight those things. And they're actually encouraging that one of the projects that you present to them this year, focus on your community as a healthy community.
We got that one covered.
So just some component backgrounds of the application. The first part deals with you talking about just your basic background of demographic information. And then the...
Age is like 30 pounds between him and the mayor.
The next part is about you telling your story. You talk about the last 10 years of how your locality has moved forward with involving citizens from the beginning to the end, and some type of planning issues or whatever that nature. And then Part II, they want you to describe three community-driven projects. And again, you have to be able to show under these, under this category, your Part II, the last five years' worth of history of addressing that particular problem. And the key here is that how much citizen involvement was involved with each of the projects that you present. So we sat back and we started thinking about some of the things that we could showcase. And we came up with maybe possible the C-Board housing development with the old Jeffrey Wilson site. Maybe showcasing our Portsmouth Homeless Action Committee, the P-HAC Committee, and all the work that they have done. Maybe our Durality Structure Program, the rewrite of our development codes. And then we started thinking about what are some of the things that we could highlight in terms of a healthy community? And we have quite a few things. We have what the file department is doing in their area and going out and reaching out into the community. The online with the Paradise Creek updates that we have done there, the bike ramps, I mean, not the bike ramps, but the bike lanes and all the things that we have done along that area. So there are some things that we have in place where we can show at least five years' worth of history to document our healthy community, things that we have done across the city. So the timeline for the All-American City Award is that starting September through February, they're going to have a monthly conference calls, and we have already got on their list and to be included into their monthly conference call. In the month of November, if we have an intent to go after this award, they would like for us to send a letter. And the key here about sending the letter is that in March, you have to pay in order to participate, and it's a $200 fee. If we submit the letter of intent, it reduces down to $100. So we would save $100 if we submit early in November in terms of wanting to seek this award. And then in April, that's when the finalists are announced. And then in, and plus, the finalists also go to Denver. And then in June, the finalists will go back to Denver, so we have the award and the workshops and things that take place. So for the city timeline, we're going to start this month and next month, soliciting projects. We're going to talk to our department heads. We're going to put stuff on our PCTV, ask the public to participate, because remember, this is not just about what we do individually as a department, it's about what we do as a city as a whole. Then we're going to review those submissions that we receive, and then, based off of those submissions that we receive, if it's enough for us to go and submit our letter of intent to go forward with, then we will submit our letter of intent to go forward. And then we will have a follow-up presentation with you guys to show you the draft of what we put together for our packet, finalized our packet around February and submitted in March. Also, around the March-April timeframe is when we will want to prepare delegations. If you have had a chance to go to the website and look at the presentations that was done by the various cities, the delegations were comprised of cross-sector people. You had, some people had militaries, we've had students, you had civic league members, you had businesses in your community come and do their presentation for you, because, again, that's key. They want to see people come and do their presentation. And then there's a follow-up, like, conference in June for, again, the award and things of that nature. So, are there any questions?
Very good. Very good. I'm glad to see us move forward with this. Can we find the banner that...
It's downstairs.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Is it hanging?
It's on the wall where Deloris Short's office is.
Okay, it's around the corner. Okay.
If you come in off the west side, walk past Deloris's office and look to your left.
It's on the wall.
Good.
It's on the wall. It's a little worn, it's a little aged.
That's why we need a new one.
Yes, sir.
A little what?
So we still in the game?
Yeah, we're seven of the guys.
Absolutely, good. Because we recommend that you be, that we be in the game. Two additional items, these are brief. You may have heard that there's a committee that was self-formed, of folks who are working on a memorial to fallen heroes, and fallen heroes in public safety. And it's a form of both remembering and memorializing people who have died in service to their fellow man in public safety jobs. Now, that's a very high calling. And it also is a form of public art. And the site that they're, they're thinking about is the Roundabout. And they have put together a computer animation, it's in the early thought phases, and you may have seen it, or you may have heard about it, but it, the word is getting out. And so what I would recommend that we do, the presentation only goes a couple minutes, that we ask the people who are thinking about this to come in and, and show you what their thoughts are. What do you think?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. And I think Janie Bryant is aware of this, she may be working on a story, and they may, she may have her story before we get them here, but we'll work hard to get them here during the month of September. Roxanne, I mean, Roseanne, I mean, Roslin.
Roslin.
I've got, I call her Roz. I've got Roxanne Flammer on my mind because of PBH. If you pass that out, I apologize.
No problem.
What we have been doing over the last several months, when we had our appropriation ordinance come before you, we typically, either the Monday night or the Tuesday, will brief you in work session about the ordinance, so that you're comfortable with what's in the ordinance. As you know, the school board has asked us to reappropriate $6.4 million, and we've been working to make sure that we understand that. And we were hoping to have that ordinance on the agenda for tomorrow evening's meeting. And so we were going to do the briefing and, and the work session. We're not there yet. We're not going to have it for tomorrow evening. We need another meeting with David Stuckwish and with Merrill. We've got that lined up for tomorrow morning at 10:00. And so that we have a productive meeting, I have sent him a list of things that we need to talk about. So I wanted to let you know that this is a work in progress. We've still got a lot of answers that, that need to be given. And feel, feel free, when you read this list, if you've got a question, please let me know.
So you're going to report at the work session tomorrow night?
No.
Or not at all?
Not at all, most likely, because I can't predict what the outcome of that meeting will be, whether or not we'll have information that we need to process. So it's probably going to be at least the next meeting.
You and George have the grand jury ruling on what the school board and what their suggestions?
Oh, yeah. It's BPH.
Do you pass, give it to everybody, so we can have a copy?
Sure. Glad to send your copy out.
But not only that, I think it would be appropriate to update us to make sure those recommendations are...
Be followed.
Either being followed or in the process of being followed.
Well, that's all we got tonight. We have a work session tomorrow evening, and we have a need for a closed meeting tomorrow evening, too. Thank you so much for your feedback. This was a good meeting.